Regular meeting of the Salem City Council is being held in person on Thursday, February 22, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on February 20, 2024, at 12:53 p.m. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselor's absent, Counselor Hapworth. Counselor Varela moves to dispense with the reading of the record. All those in favor? Everyone, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Davis.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The Salem City Council honors that this land is Narmkeg, or fishing place, where generations of Narmkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for generations, centuries. We acknowledge that this is unceded indigenous land and it is also acknowledged that the Massachusetts Tribe will continue to honor and hold this land into the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing, meaningful dialogue with the indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle the legacies of oppression and inequities that persist today. Public testimony? There is none. Hearings, none? Appointments and reappointments?
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's reappointments with the following terms to expire. You want me to read the list?
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move that we go for confirmation by roll call vote.
Do you want to read the list?
Thank you, President Prozinski. Real quick, we have Sam Fiore of Beautification Committee, Tina Zalano of the Board of Assessors, Tom Campbell, Bart Hoskins of the Conservation Commission, George Barboozey, Counsel on Aging, Doctors Jeremy Schiller, Board of Health, and Richard Lobsitt, the Board of Trust Fund Commissioners. And just wanted to thank them for their continued advocacy on the boards and thank you for serving.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
On confirmation of the seven appointments? Ten in the affirmative, one absent. The A's have it. Further appointments and reappointments?
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Yimalis Cruz of 190 Bridge Street to the Scholarship and Education Committee with a term to expire on April 11, 2025.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move that we confirm it by roll call vote.
Under discussion?
Thank you, President. I had the pleasure of speaking with Ms. Cruz this evening. Ms. Cruz is a three-year Salem resident, originally from Miami, Florida, is a literacy coach at Collins Middle School. And Ms. Cruz definitely was really committed to education here in the city of Salem, has volunteered for Salem Food Pantry, for the Salem Main Streets, and really looking forward personally to the impact that Ms. Cruz can have on the Scholarship Education Committee. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. And you move to have it confirmed by roll call vote?
Correct.
Under discussion? We did. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Can you give me one second?
And we pause this program for technical difficulties. And there we go. Very good.
My apologies.
On the appointment of Ms. Cruz to the Scholarship and Education Committee with a term to expire April 11, 2025, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
On the appointment of Ms. Cruz to the Scholarship and Education Committee? Ten in the affirmative, one absent, one absent. Matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments? I'm sorry. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I would like to suspend the rules to allow Ms. Cruz to speak if she may well. I think she's on Zoom as well.
She is. My apologies, Ms. Cruz. You can speak now.
Thank you so much. I don't know if my camera will come on or not, but I was just going to say I have been living in Salem these past three years, as mentioned, and I love the city of Salem so much and I really look forward to contributing in more ways as I learn about the different ways of opportunities that are out there. And although this is only my third year in Salem, this is my 13th year as an educator. So I look forward to contributing to the committee and bringing my expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Further appointments and reappointments?
We have the mayor's appointment of Romel Kid of 41 Osborne Hill Drive to the Salem Housing Authority with a term to expire February 22, 2029.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move that this be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela? Moves it to be held under the rules. All in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments?
We have the mayor's appointment of Betsy Frederick of 93 Canal Street, Salem, to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee with a term to expire on February 22, 2027.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move that this be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela moves that this be held under the rules. All in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further appointments?
We have the mayor's reappointment of the following with their terms. Jack Butterworth, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board for two years to expire on 4/1/26. Jonathan Burke, Planning Board to expire on 3/1/2029. And Sarah Tabet on Planning Board for 3/1/2029.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President. I'd like to move that this be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela moves that it be held under the rules. All in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Communications from the mayor.
We've in order that the sum of $29,661.42 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to be expended for a Salem school department employee.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for suspension of the rules.
Seeing no objection? Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. This is a contractual buyback and this appropriation is necessary to fund the retirement buyback for Ms. Finn. And we thank her for her service to our Salem public schools.
Thank you. All those in favor of the approval of the Retirement Stabilization Fund transfer? All in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We've in order to accept the donation of $1,200 from Linwood and Anne Marie Valentin. The donation is to be deposited into the Park and Rec Donation Fund.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. This is a donation for a bench and we thank Linwood and Anne Marie Valentin for their generosity.
Thank you. All in favor on the acceptance of the donation? All opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have in order to accept the donation of $1,200 from Scott Hayward. The donation is to be deposited into the Park and Rec Donation Fund.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. This is also a donation for a bench and we thank Scott Hayward.
Thank you. All those in favor of the donation of $1,200 to be deposited for Mr. Scott Hayward? All opposed? All those opposed? Matter carries. Thank you. Further communications from the mayor?
We have a resolution authorizing submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Stott moves for adoption by roll call vote, seeing no objection. Under the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was a resolution that was just submitted to us on behalf of the mayor, or by the mayor on behalf of the superintendent as well. This will also be in front of school committee, but the way that our meetings worked and the deadlines needed, it's in front of us first and then it will be in front of school committee at their next meeting. The resolution that we're passing this evening authorizes the Salem Public Schools in the city to submit a statement of interest, so basically just an application, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the authority's accelerated repair program. So again, the request is an application to possibly apply for grants and funding. That's it. So the project that we are hoping to apply for is a roof replacement for the Bates School. Bates School is in Ward 6 and the roof right now has 25 years of age. I think anybody in this area and the torrential rains that we've been getting the past couple of seasons will know that once a roof hits a certain age and it starts leaking, you definitely need to make sure that the envelope of the building is taken care of or else many more problems will be down the road quite soon. So this project, the roof replacement, because of the age, it's the oldest roof on all schools in the system. Because of the age, it qualifies for various programs within the city. So we're hoping to apply for and then hopefully receive some additional money towards this cost. I will note that the Assistant Superintendent Elizabeth Polly is here this evening in case anyone has additional questions. But I did spoke to, or speak to the superintendent earlier just to confirm that this is just a resolution to approve an application, which, yay, I think it's kind of funny. We're not really doing much more, but I hope we are able to submit this resolution so we can get the application in by the deadline and get that roof project going.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
On the resolution authorizing submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, I have ten in the affirmative, one absent. Matter carries. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for immediate reconsideration in hopes that it does not prevail.
Counselor Stott moves for immediate reconsideration in hopes that it does not fail. All those in favor? All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. The matter does not carry. Further communications from the mayor?
We have in order pursuant to City Ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 21688, requiring city council authorization to enter into a contract exceeding three years, the city council hereby authorized the mayor to enter into a 20-year agreement with Framingham-based Merco, sorry, a energy services company for HVAC improvements at the Bates and Witchcraft Heights Elementary School.
Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer this to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Stott moves to refer this to the Committee on Ordinances, License, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? I'm sorry, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was appointed to Counsel Harvey and myself this evening because the two schools in discussion for this 20-year agreement are located in our wards, Witchcraft Heights and Bates Elementary School, and some updates to HVAC infrastructure, which our Director of Sustainability and Resiliency, Neil Duffy, is proposing a 20-year agreement with a company to help with the improvements. That said, that's basically my understanding of it, which is why I would like this to go to the Committee of Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, just to learn a little more. I know Mr. Duffy is great with presenting and providing the information needed. There is a timeline on this. I believe it's needed by March 14. So as long as we can have this reported back to the next council meeting, I'm sure, you know, we are definitely all in full support of energy efficiency, but a 20-year agreement, I think, is something that we want to at least see the agreement and discuss on.
Any other discussion? Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I'd like to make a, not a friendly mention, but just make sure that that is also co-posted. And since we are also gracious with the presence of Ms. Polly, I don't know if we did want to suspend the rules if Ms. Polly had a brief synopsis on possibly why, just to, since you're here. If not, no problem.
Counselor Varela moves to suspend the rules. Let Ms. Polly speak. All those in favor? You have the floor.
Thank you. So I believe the question is about the Bates and Witchcraft ESCO project. So the city of Salem has entered into, or will be entering into, as I understand it, an arrangement with Amoresco that will help us look at all of our energy consumption and costs and has there, I believe, at the recommendation stage, around how we might save money and reduce our consumption. So these two projects are ahead of the larger conversation about how Salem might engage in reducing its consumption and lowering its costs because we are proposing to use time-limited funding to pay for the new boilers at Bates and the new energy controls at Bates and Witchcraft. We have ESER money, which is money that was available to schools across the country as relief from the pandemic. That money has to be spent by September 30, 2024. So this project is being funded in part by ESER and so is a little bit ahead of the rest of the ESCO conversation and planning because we're hoping to order boilers and get them all installed in time so that we can use money that expires on September 30. Is that helpful? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cohen?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Thank you, President Prozinski. So our next council meeting is on the 14th. So if we approve it on that day, that evening, would that give you enough time?
I think so, but I'd like to check with Neil Duffy.
Okay. I guess Mr. Duffy has confirmed that that date works. I would like to say one other thing. I have experience with Amoresco, not only when I worked for the Sustainability Committee, but in my previous work life, and they're a really great company. They're very good at making sure that systems are as efficient as possible.
Any further discussion? On Counselor Varela's motion to refer this matter into Committee of Ordinances, License, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? Co-posted, sorry, co-posted, the committee of the whole, all those in favor? Opposed? Matter carries. Mayor's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Jerslow?
Thank you, President Prozinski. City of Salem, February 22, 2024, regular meeting. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Resolution, Dominican Republic Independence Day. Whereas the Dominican Flag Committee of Salem will celebrate the raising of the Dominican flag at Lafayette Park to celebrate the raising of the Dominican flag that marks Dominican Republic's 180th anniversary of independence. And whereas the Dominican community has dedicated this celebration of independence to Dominican Republic's men and women who have distinguished themselves in different disciplines in the city of Salem. And whereas the Dominican community has established itself through the efforts of many Dominicans in business, sports, politics, education, and many other disciplines, and have exhibited their pride, passion, and love of family, religion, and commitment to hard work. And whereas the Dominican community enriches the city of Salem by promoting the rich Dominican culture through music, dance, and the arts. And whereas the city of Salem recognizes that supporting the Latinx community will lead to greater continued equality for all residents and help strengthen our city. And whereas the Dominican flag raising will take place at Lafayette Park on Thursday, February 22, 2024, at 3:00 p.m. in anticipation of Dominican Republic Independence Day. And now therefore we, the Salem City Councilors, do hereby proclaim February 22, 2024, as Dominican Republic Independence Day and call upon our public officials, educators, librarians, and all Salem residents to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs here in Salem and beyond the borders of our commonwealth.
I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Jerslow moves resolution be adopted by roll call vote. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry. Counselor Merkel. My apologies.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I just wanted to point out what a great event this was today. We had many counselors there. I've attended for years. It's always a wonderful celebration, you know, of the culture and the traditions that go on and then the event that follows, the flag raising. Terrific. A lot of the community came out for this and I just want to recognize what an impactful and important and fun event this was today.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On Counselor Jerslow's motion to approve this resolution, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Marcello?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
On the motion to approve the resolution for the Dominican Republic Independence Day, 10 council members voted, 10 in the affirmative, one absent. Motion carries. For the motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Marcello?
Thank you, President. In the year 2024, an ordinance relative to traffic be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salem as follows. Section 1.
Waive the reading.
Thank you.
Counselor Varela moves to waive the reading. All those in favor? Opposed?
I move for adoption by first passage.
Counselor Marcello moves for adoption by first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. So this was submitted by Dave Kacharsky and Lieutenant Tucker and went through also the Traffic and Parking Commission. They did a review last summer and then this kind of got pushed aside for a little bit. This sets up school zones for all of the schools in the city, including the Charter School. Even, most places already have signs that are in the correct area because they did follow the state guidance related to setting up school zones, but it was never formally adopted as part of our ordinances. When we had the project at the Salt and Stall School, for those, that school zone marking with the lights and the speed, the radar speed feedback, the company or the grant asked that we formally adopt a school zone for that area. And so they, because they are very complete when they do the ordinances, they added it for every single school. So that's pretty much what it is. This will help us in the future when going for grants for traffic calming near schools. Hopefully it will help us if we ever get approval to do speed enforcement in school zones, to delineate what the school zone is and add the video cameras that way. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Watsonfelt?
Thank you, President Prozinski. Just to say I'm extremely excited about this. I think, you know, everything Counselor Marcello just said is a great tee-up for all of the work we're hoping to do for traffic calming and protecting not only our youngest residents but all of our residents in the downtown. One note I did want to add is that the comment in Lieutenant Tucker's submission includes, just a note that we may need to revisit the specific times around the school zones, just if the school calendar changes in any way or there are other decisions to be made. Just wanted to make sure that we call that out for everyone's shared understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'm sure that it'll also bolster our ability to advocate for cameras on school zones first and maybe that'll lead to bigger and better things. On Counselor Marcello's motion to move for the adoption of first passage on the ordinance relative to traffic in school zones, all those in favor? Those opposed? Committee reports. Counsel Marcello?
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, February 22, 2024, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of granting of certain licenses, secondhand clothing for a refined 72 Washington Street, has considered said matter and would recommend that it be granted.
On the acceptance of Counsel Marcello's report, all those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. It was just a straight, normal acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you. On the adoption of the recommendation to grant these licenses, all those in favor? Opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports. Counsel Marcello?
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, February 22, 2024, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the committee of the whole, to whom was referred the matter of discussing of right on red ordinances for traffic lights in South Salem and Highland Ave areas, has considered said matter and would recommend that the matter remain in committee.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed? Under discussion?
Thank you, President. This was the first night of kind of doing a deep dive into a section of Salem and the traffic lights and kind of getting a feel for what's going on there. It was a good discussion. They are mostly state lights and I think at the end of the night, the only, the only one that there was consensus on was the light at Wilson Street on Highland Ave for traffic moving northbound. That's the only side of that light that allows a right on red and because it is at a school, I think that there was consensus to remove that right on red. It's also a two-lane road and the right-hand lane is not a right turn only, so you could be stopped there anyways if the car in front of you is not going right. So that would need to go to the state to get approval, but the rest of the ones we went through, and it's just updating the ordinances at this point. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the adoption of the recommendation by Counsel Marcello? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports? Counsel Varela?
Thank you, President Prozinski. City of Salem-
City of Salem and City Council, February 22, 2024. Committee on Government Services, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of creating an Elections Commission and the process involved, has considered such matter and would recommend that the home rule petition be adopted if approved by the city solicitor. Add the words "add education" in section 2 of the last sentence.
On Counsel Varela's? Acceptance of Counsel Berlo's report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Under discussion.
Thank you, President Proznooski. So we had a very detailed meeting. This is one of two meetings concerning Elections Committee. We first started off identifying communities that have Elections Commissions, some close to our population. We reviewed Medford, Cambridge, Revere, Everett, and Somerville, and we had the pleasure of having in attendance our Honorable City Clerk Rochelle Sport, as well as the Board of Registarians. We had Mr. Donald Bates and Alexandria Peneiro Shields, as well as City Clerk of Everett, Sergio Cornelio. And we had a thoughtful conversation about the makeup of a home rule petition. And after really looking into this, after myself spending way too much time looking into an Elections Law and how this works, which is really fun, what we really found out was we are really held by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 5116A, when it comes to the makeup of the home rule petition and the adoption of an Elections Commission, if we are going to discharge or dispel of a Board of Registarians. And, you know, what we really found out is from the first meeting, we had some thoughtful conversations about party affiliation. And what it really comes down to is we really have to follow guidance when it comes to the Secretary of State's Office of Elections. And when it comes to party affiliation, that's something that's really embedded into general law. We need to have equal representation from both primary parties, which would be the Democratic Party and the Republican Party. So I think we handled that question. When it comes to the home rule petition, what we talked about was in addition to section 2, which was education. After talking to Ms. Renard, that's something that's consistent with the general law and doesn't seem like a huge change, so that was added without problem. We also had some questions about the makeup of the home rule petition. So what's unique about this is 16A requires four members of an Elections Commission. What we're trying to do here in Salem, under the consultation of Lauren Goldberg of KP Law, as well as our city solicitor Beth Renard, is that we add a fifth member to the commission. And after talking to Beth, you'll see everyone, you have the home rule petitions in front of you, the strike through, and the additions in red, that after talking to Beth, it is consistent with general law that we can require that the administrative director of the Board of Elections Commissioner be a part of the actual voting body. So that is consistent with general law. And the reason we're also adding a fifth member is to make sure that we don't have a tie. So it really does create an instance where if we're actually voting on something contentious, that we won't have a tiebreaker. The other question was with section 3 on who actually appoints the Elections Administrator with that vote. And we did get clarity from Beth and Lauren Goldberg that we're adding, not also, which is a, you know, you can call it a, you know, it can go either way, but it is consistent with general law that we shall appoint an administrative director to the Board of Elections Commissioner. So when it comes to who's responsible for that, the Elections Commission will appoint the Elections Administrator with confirmation from the mayor. And this is also consistent with general law. But when it comes to the appointments of all Elections Commissioners, that will be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. And so after discussion with not only the mayor and some of our councilors and our city solicitor, I think we need a little time to digest this conversation. You know, I know the legislature's at the end of their session, but we really have to be careful here when it comes to sending this as well. One of the concerns was that in the charter of our home rule petition, it does require that once you adopt a Board of Elections Commission, that you're required by April 1st to remove the city clerk from the board and enact an Elections Commissioner. The concern with that is, let's say if we send out that home rule petition next week after we adopt this, how long is it going to take the legislature to get something back? If they did get something back to us before April, I think our hands would be tied, and we would be required to dispel the city clerk from elections. And I think that maybe the timing might be a little interesting for that, and we do need time to figure out when it comes to our personnel and our staff within the city. So we really want to have those conversations and be thoughtful. So with that, what I'm looking to do is make a new motion to postpone the date. I'm sorry. What we're going to do is we're going to move to amend the changes in the home rule petition, and then from there we'll go forward, hopefully.
Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you. I would second that motion to amend with the two changes in red that we see here.
Would this be something that'll be continued in committee, held in committee?
No.
So your motion is?
My motion is to amend first the changes within the document.
Okay. Under this, on Counsel Varela's amendment to the changes, Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you. I just want to say, after the meeting last night, when I was kind of thinking through the whole home rule petition, I think there were more people than just me, but the whole idea of how the administrative director is selected was still kind of, it didn't, it was still rough in my mind. So I appreciate the work that Counsel Varela did with Beth Renard to kind of iron out that whole process and how that fifth member becomes a part of the Election Commission, and it's spelled out clearly in here, so there's no question moving forward that that administrative director is a part of the Election Commission. And as Counsel Varela said, the only outstanding thing is the effective date when this is passed. We just need to be careful when it's passed, if it's during an election cycle, that could be troublesome. So I think Beth Renard is working out that language, so I'm happy to see these two changes, though.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So the motion to make, I'm sorry, Counsel Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for my clarification, so I hear, I agree with the amendments. I'm still trying to catch up myself, having just, you know, starting to review this. Happy with the amendments that are being discussed. I have additional questions as well. So we can vote on the amendments, and then is the intent to send it back to committee for further conversation?
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Proznooski. No, the intent is to not send this back to committee, but take a vote on the next council meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
So we're making amendments to a meeting that was held, which allowed public comment last week on the elections. But we're making amendments, and we're scheduling something that's not going to allow public comment on the amendments. Counsel Varela.
Thank you, if I may. So the reason we also want to postpone the vote tonight is we do want to give the opportunity for the general public to digest this home rule petition, so if they do have additional concerns, they can bring it up in public comment in two weeks.
So your motion is to postpone this for two weeks until the next council meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Proznooski. Couple of things. Yes, I favor the amendments that were made. I do believe it created more clarity, but there were some important organizations in Salem that had meetings that conflicted with our meeting last night, and they weren't able to do comment. And they'll be able to comment, hopefully positively, at the next meeting. I think it would be a world record for the legislature to get this back quick, you know, in this timetable. I will say what I said at the meeting last night, that because there are five other communities that have electoral commissions, because Counsel Varela did his diligence and, I think, called every one of them, and because of the work that Attorney Goldberg and our solicitor did, you know, to make this, I believe, something that the legislature would not have an issue with. It's not dramatically different than any other electoral commission. I think it will get passed, but I can't imagine it would get passed, you know, this session ends, I think, June 20th or something like that, and I'm not sure it would even get passed before the fall session. And that's just a guess, but I'm really, I just want to commend Counsel Varela for all his diligence, doing all the work, and for the really good discussion we had last night.
Any other discussion? Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President Proznooski. I'm still a little murky on the Elections Department we have now. How is it get fold in? You said fold into this board, Election Board. I still, it's very murky, and it's not spelt out how that process, you have a couple that is confirmed by the mayor, it's appointed by the mayor. I just don't, I would like more clarification on how that's actually going to happen, and if you talk to the, all the employees in the Election Office.
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Proznooski. So through you to Counsel Jerslow. When it comes to the makeup of Board of Registarians or an Elections Commission, the mayor is obligated by law to provide resources to an Elections Department. So when it comes to our Elections Department here in Salem, we're not going to be taking away anything, and when it comes to the day-to-day work they do, we're not changing any of that work when it comes to elections. The only change we're making is removing the city clerk as the ex officio and appointing a manager to this. So with this, I really feel like this will add an efficiency to our Elections Department to give a little more autonomy, but in no such way I think it's going to negatively affect our Elections Department. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Proznooski. Through you to Counsel Jerslow. So the home rule petition is only for the Electoral Commission. It is not determining the actual department. And it's, so there is, as was discussed last night, there is a possibility, based on what Counsel Varela said about the necessity for the mayor to provide the proper resources for the department to potentially grow, but that's not what the home rule petition is. The home rule petition is just to establish an Electoral Commission and not to define the department necessarily.
Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President. So my understanding, so it's not taking away from that, that whole department is staying? Or they, like you said, you'd be folded into it? I still don't, are they keeping their position of the person that's in charge of the office now? Are they going to be the head of that commission? You don't spell it out like it's just all poss, it's possible, or it could be, or folded in. It's not, to me, it's not spelt out properly, or to some understanding.
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Proznooski. Through you to Counsel Jerslow. Yes, you know, when it comes to who actively runs our elections now, which would be Ms. Simons and Ms. Fisher, as well as Rochelle Sport, who is our full-time Elections, say, clerk, most likely what would happen is our full-time clerk now, Rochelle Sport, would become the Elections Manager. The three full-time employees that are currently now in Elections, two with one besides Rochelle, thank you, would continue on with Elections. And after a conversation with Ms. Camerata, she feels confident that, you know, that department may need some more support as well, especially that we're going to be having to feel they can see with our city clerk and our assistant city clerk. So with that, no one will be losing their jobs. There's not going to be a different makeup of that department. I think it would be wise to keep Ms. Sport and the rest of the employees in Elections to, for the continuity of our elections, and I feel confident that will absolutely happen with this change. Thank you.
Counsel Stott.
Thank you, President Proznooski. So just my outstanding questions then, since we won't be going to committee, to the confirmation by the mayor, which was just clarified, and I've heard a few times people say, and also confirmation by the council, but that's not spelled out in here. So is that true or not true, that the council also confirms? And then I'll just say my second one to say peace. Effective date is definitely, that was the part that last night I was trying to figure out, because like if we do submit it next week and they come back and miraculously approve it in a week, which, you know, who knows? But I like to think worst-case scenarios when it comes to, and say that happens and, you know, everything changes. It's essentially out of our hands. Like we will have nothing to do with deciding the makeup of the department or employee count or any of that. So that's why I think it's important to have those conversations now while we still can, because essentially, we're not, it's out of our purview once that happens. But that's neither here nor there, I guess, at this point, but that is related more to the effective date. So if we can get clarification on that, and then it looks like it's just confirmation of the mayor, and there's no involvement with the council, I just wanted to confirm that part.
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Proznooski. So what we're following is the guidance is from the provisions of 16A of Chapter 51, and it is clearly spelled out in the general laws that the commissions of self consist of, with us, will be five members equally representing two leading parties. Appointments shall be made by the mayor with approval of the city council. This is something that is consistent with general law, and we cannot augment or change. So our hands are really tied with that. Basically, when it comes to the five members, they will be appointed by the mayor and confirmed. Four members? No, is it four or five?
I believe it would be appointed and confirmed by the mayor, confirmed by the council, as the votes are already done, and the election managers, I, or, and if I do, commission members to become the fifth and have that department, and then confirm by the mayor. Is that, is that my understanding?
I would not necessarily disagree, but we need clarity at this point from our city solicitor, because the way the home rule petition is written is that five members will be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. Happy to answer that very quick question.
So the fifth member is the administrative director. And it says here that the board shall appoint the administrative director.
Yeah, but the board shall. Sorry, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that this matter remain in committee.
That's exactly where I was going. Thank you.
That's fine. You know what? That's fine.
And that will also give the public a better opportunity to weigh in on this. So on the adoption of the recommendation by Counsel Varela to keep this in committee, all those in, I'm sorry, that's true, on the amended, first on the amended changes that were made tonight, that were given tonight, on this, all those in favor of the amended changes?
Wait, what are we voting on?
The amended changes.
The amended.
Right. 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 Back to committee. On, we're voting on?
Remaining in committee.
Remaining in committee, correct. So any changes or anything can be made then, and the public can have the opportunity to speak, and more questions can be answered, so that we can bring it forward in two weeks and nobody will have any questions at that point, because we'll all attend and we'll all be very well informed, very good. So on Counsel Varela's motion to keep this in committee, to keep the creation of the election commission in committee, all in favor? All opposed? Approved unanimously. Communications from city officials? Petitions?
We have a petition from National Grid to install one single OMPOL on Congress Street near the intersection of Harper Street.
Hearing ordered March 14th, 2024. Further petitions?
We have a petition from National Grid to install conduits on Congress Street near the intersection of Harper Street.
Hearing ordered March 14th, 2024. Further petitions?
We have a request from B&amp;S Fitness to hold a road race, Black Cat 10 and 20 miler in youth of City Streets on March 24th, 2024.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Marcello moves that it be granted under discussion?
Thank you, President. I want to just thank the Black Cat, thank the organizers of the Black Cat 10 and 20 miler. I know that when we get these things, it's kind of an inconvenience for the neighborhood. So I just wanted to point out that this is a fundraiser, and it's going to four different organizations, the Salem Academy Charter School, Good Sports, Inc., which drives equitable access in youth sports and physical activity, the VFW of Marblehead, and the Ally Kastner Scholarship. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And B&amp;S has a history of running very professional events in the city. I can say personally, I've worked with them on many, many occasions, and they are the way that they run their events. So Counsel Marcello moves that B&amp;S Fitness be allowed to hold the road race on March 24, 2024. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Further petitions?
We have a list of public guides and taxi operators, and one vehicle for hire operators only.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Marcello, move that these all be granted under discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Further petitions?
We have two claims.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Marcello moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, License, and Legal Affairs under discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Further petitions?
We have two drainier contract operating license applications.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Marcello moves that these be granted under discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Unfinished business?
We have the second passage of a traffic ordinance relative to Pleasant Street.
Counsel Watson Felth.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I do not have to read this because it is the second, right, Madam City Clerk? Thank you. I move that this be adopted for second, by second passage.
Counsel Watson Felth moves that this be adopted for second passage under discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. This being close to the end of the, Counsel, I'm going to be asking for quite a personal So Counsel, let's, okay. I planned on doing this, even though I, making this statement, even though I wasn't aware that I was going to be presiding tonight. And it's about what I believe is the white elephant that's in the room, and it's, it's appears to me, and I'll say it personally, appears to me that there's a growing lack of respect and communication amongst each other. There are 11 of us that are representing 45,000 residents in this city. Us, 11 of us, seven ward counselors who are acutely tuned in to the needs of their respective But for some reason, we begin not to speak to each other when it comes to issues and matters concerning different parts of the city, which already have elected representation through their ward counselors. You know, the reason that I'm bringing this up tonight is that, you know, I am the old guy on the council, and I've got a little bit of experience in public service because I've done it for many years. But this guy's probably made more mistakes than all of you folks put together. So as the oldest, maybe not the wisest, but the oldest, you realize that communication, communication is what makes things work. It's the oil that makes the machine work properly. It just appears that by the lack of talking to each other, the lack of getting advice from each other, of those people who are elected in their specific wards, who have more say than other people in other wards, you don't get all the information that you need, because you're making judgments based on your own perceptions, but not maybe getting all the information from the people that really know, their constituents, the people that were elected in their areas by their constituents, and who know more about their areas than we all do. So all I'm asking from you, my colleagues, my teammates, I guess, my friends, is that before any of you publicly express your opinions on matters outside of your elected venues, that we have the courtesy of speaking first with the elected officials who preside over their constituents, so that we can have a better understanding before we decide to pass judgment. With that, Counsel Watson Felth.
Thank you, President Prozinski, and I appreciate your comments. I have often been very grateful for the ongoing engagement with my fellow city counselors and the respect that I felt as the representative of Ward 2, so I can appreciate your comments. My point of personal privilege tonight is a little different. Yet again, there has been a senseless tragedy in our country with the death of a 16-year-old high school student whose name is Nex Benedict, who died from sustaining incredibly violent injuries from a beating by their peers, specifically for identifying as a non-binary human being. I have said it so many times, whoo, sorry, that in this great state of Massachusetts and in this incredible city of Salem, we care for each other and make space for each other in a way that is truly unique and so special and so important. And it is so hard and frustrating to not know how to influence on a national stage as an elected official on a municipal level. It can feel a little bit like we are in a safety bubble here, but it cannot go without saying time and time again that when violence happens to one person, it is felt by so many who share similar challenges or life stories, and none of us is totally safe. The incredibly vulnerable trans and non-binary community is experiencing ever-increasing violence and ever-increasing deaths, not only in America but globally. And in my humble opinion, it makes absolutely no sense. And what I find so terrifying by Nex Benedict's death is that the violence upon them was perpetrated by peers who are being taught hate. They are hearing hateful rhetoric, and they are exacting violence upon others with full justification for their behavior. And it has caused another senseless death in an incredibly vulnerable community. And I extend that to all children because of just the incredible violence in our world and how terrifying it is to grow up, I think, right now in this generation, but especially if you're different in any way, shape, or form. If you are living as your true self, that should never put you at risk of harm, especially if you are not doing harm to others. So it just feels so twisted and so backwards and so violent. And I just, we need to say Nex Benedict's name and hold them and the community close in all we do. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. If this, Counsel Marcello.
Move to adjourn.
Counselor Marcello moves to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned.